Church.
Is that microphone on?
I'll make sure. Is that better? All right. My name is Eric Smith. I'm the lead pastor and founder of New Church. It's about a year old here in Benita Springs on the east side of I-75 next to Publix. It's called Hope City. And grateful to be here and thankful for all of you who serve. Let's pray. Lord, we just come to you this morning and we thank you for this opportunity to gather in this place and just to serve the people of Benita Springs. I thank you for each one of these folks who serve in our city. And I just pray a special blessing over them. I pray for their families, God. I pray for just our city and just all the people that have gone through so much these last weeks from Hurricane Ian. Lord, I just pray for continued recovery. I pray for your favor and your blessing over all the efforts. And Lord, I just pray for the future of our city. I pray that you would just continue to grow it in a healthy way. And Lord, we pray for all the churches and leaders that we have here. I pray that you continue to bless them. We just thank you. We love you. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance on three. One, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, how about Deb, roll call?
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman Purdon.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Present.
Councilman Forbes.
Present.
Okay, approval agenda. It's a little flexible today, so we're going to work through it. Mayors, welcome. Thank you all for coming. We had an election and we have two council people that are leaving us after all these years that they worked very hard for us, and we're going to honor them today. Public comment. Any public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Jim Magnus, lived in Benita Springs for a little over 30 years. Just wanted to come up and thank the entire council, the mayor, staff. We are very, very fortunate in the city of Benita Springs to have such wonderful people that are willing to run for office and to be in office and to support the city and support all of the wonderful things that have happened in the city. Would like to especially note both Mike and Amy as outgoing council people. Again, thank you all so much. I mean, it means a lot that we have such responsible, capable people that are willing to run and willing to serve for the city of Benita Springs. Thank you all very much.
Good morning. My name is Trish Leonard, and I'm also a resident and business owner here in Benita Springs. And I came here this morning on behalf of the Downtown Business Alliance. We wanted to thank both Amy Caramba and Mike Gibson, council people, excuse me, for your service to our community, but in addition to all of you who work hard to make our community a better place to live. And we want to just, and personally, I want to say thank you for always attending our meetings and for listening to me and our comments and our emails and all of that. But thank you all for your service to our community, and congratulations to the new winners as well, and we look forward to a long-term relationship. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Hello. Good morning. Happy Thanksgiving. My name is Teri Lemain. I'm the president of the Benita Springs Assistance Office and also a very happy resident of Benita Springs. Thank you, Mike, for your service. Thank you, Amy, for your service. But the reason why I came up here today to do public comment is I'd like to talk about the funding that the five charities in our great city have received. The city was awarded a half a million dollars, and back in the spring, all the charities were asked to apply for funding. Five charities were awarded the funding, and I'm happy to say that all five charities are hard-working partnership charities with United Way. So that was a great award that all the charities are filing 990s, they're following proper protocol, they're reporting all their services. And that might not mean a lot to people in the audience or residents, but it is very hard to maintain your United Way partnership. So my board of directors and my staff and all the residents with that $70,000 that we received, we are able to provide everyone from age one to 100 with fresh milk, fresh eggs, fresh produce, fresh meat, staples that everybody needs to keep a healthy diet. So without that $70,000 in funding, we would have food insecurity in our community. And I look forward to working with all five of these partnering agencies. I wish everyone in this room and city council a very happy, blessed Thanksgiving holiday. Take care and thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Teri.
Thank you, Teri.
Anybody else have a public comment? Arlene, would you like to take over?
Thank you. If you would indulge us at this time, we have a brief video we'd like to share with you in recognition of Councilmember Caramba and Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson.
Uh-oh. Blessings. Your worship.
Well, with the new library opening up soon, it should bring more people down to Old 31 to walk around our new beautiful streetscape and check out the businesses that are here
up arms to secure, defend, and maintain the core principles on which the nation's freedoms depend. And whereas Americans, veterans, answered that call when asked to protect our nation
and hopefully spur some economic development to bring in some new businesses. So the initial project of the streetscape was to spur the growth of downtown, but hopefully
for some of the most brutal and ruthless tyrants, terrorists, and militaries the world has ever known.
with the library opening, that will further garner interest of new businesses coming down and people coming down just to check out what's here and what's coming soon.
What I did want to share with you all is that two of my mentors have taught me things about leadership. Gary would say, "You've got to be cut from a different mold," and it's a wacky mold to go into public service at the staff side and at your leadership level. And Carl would share for us that you have to have a servant's heart. And a servant's heart is one that's not boastful. It's one that's not for themselves. It's ones that put the needs above others first. And I cannot say that more clearly about the two of you and the support you've provided to our staff. So, thank you. Thank you.
Shouldn't have.
Yeah. Mike. Mike and Amy. Yeah, come on. We've got to go with you.
You know me too well. I think they're just going to have us if we have something to say.
Are you here about this?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you. On behalf of the city council, the mayor and city council, as well as your staff, we would like to thank you for your many years of service and with this plaque, Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson. And at this time, could your family come forward because we have something for Bobby also? Because she shared you with us for all this time. And Amy Caramba, thank you for all of your service to your staff here. We're all in support of you and appreciate all you've done for us as well in the city. And we have this for you here.
This is for Michael. Here you go, Michael. Here you go.
And council, if you wanted to come forward and take a picture. And then if you'll indulge us at the very end, your staff would like a picture with everybody, too.
Have I won a smile?
All right, stop. Come on. Do you think a statement? Yep, yep. We've got more, yes. Am I supposed to? We've got a couple things more. Yes. Mike? Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
What a great team. Wow.
So, we're going to let ladies go first, so Councilmember Corey.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Well, Amy, you're going to be missed, I think, not only by the city of Benita Springs, but by the council members as well. When you get to this stage, you think about your legacy. And with respect to Amy, I think of her legacy to the community and all the things that she got behind, supported, and helped us to accomplish over the last six and a half years that she's been here. I think of the quadrant plan that she had the vision for, got behind, made sure it happened in a sensitive way to our residents and to the businesses surrounding that quadrant plan. We're now in the first phases of actually getting the quadrant plan engineered and subsequently built. She was a driving force behind the Stormwater Utility, the downtown development plan that we recently approved, and she's always protected the interests of the citizens of Benita Springs with respect to taxes, land development, and our comprehensive code. Her legacy to council is led by her example as a public servant. She's been visionary. She's dedicated to planning. She's content, sensitive. How does it impact people? How does it impact businesses? Is it for the greater good? She has worked hard to implement those things that she's gotten around and supported, and she has, without a doubt, attended so many meetings with the Horizon Council, the Arts and Public Places, the veterans groups, Rails to Trails, just to mention a few. Her legacy to me is a person that very much follows ready, aim, fire. She's always ready to do the research. She thinks the problems through to the best of her ability. She aims very carefully for what it is that she thinks we ought to do. And once she's satisfied, then we pull the trigger and it gets done, which is a contrast to me. I'm more of a ready, fire, aim kind of guy. Let's get the thing moving and we'll figure out how to fix it later on. So I welcome that kind of contrast when we're on council. I think council and staff will miss her leadership. They'll miss her good example, but we can all be thankful for the services that she has provided and wish her well in her next phase of finding something to do with all the time now that she's got. So, thank you, Amy, very much.
That was beautiful. Thanks so much.
I'll just stay here. That's fine. I don't even need that. I've got this, actually.
He's not going to get a kiss.
Yeah, no. I'm just going to, real quick from Mike Gibson, Amy, thank you. It's been such an honor to work with you. I've learned a lot from you. You're probably the most thorough person that I've had the privilege of working with. I'm always on my toes every single meeting I come to, you know? But that makes the city better. That makes the city better. And, you know, maybe if I'm a little tired and I'm like, you know, am I going to go over this again? I know Amy's already gone over it three times, you know? So you'll be missed, and it's just been, it's been a long ride. So, thank you for your service to the city. Mike, I don't even know where to start with you, buddy. You know, it seemed like I was just knocking doors for you before you ran. He doesn't like this type of stuff. He hates attention. He didn't even want to knock on doors when he ran for city council. So I was knocking on doors for him, telling him, "My buddy's working at the bike shop right now, but, you know, if he wins, you're going to have somebody who's just like you, who's going to fight for the little people." And he's done that. He's done that so many ways, you know? As far as small businesses goes, as far as the environment goes, you know, as far as, you know, getting our downtown done, you've just, you're, in my life, dude, you're, I personally, for those of you who know me personally, I run the congressional office for Congressman Byron Donalds. That's two counties. So I know every council, every board, all of these electeds. And Byron often says, you know, "There's a lot of electeds, but there's not a lot of leaders." Mike Gibson, you are that in spades. You have been, you never care about credit. You never care about how much time it takes. You'll go out of your way. You will do whatever it takes to get it done because you're one of those guys. If you say it's going to get done, the city can go to sleep knowing it's going to get done. You have a servant's heart like, I know hundreds of elected officials, hundreds. You are, you're one of the best of us, and you will be missed. Thank you for your service to our city, and thank you for being here for me through, you know, personal and professional hurricanes and all that life brings. So, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, most people probably don't know a little secret here. I was involved with Mike's campaign. In fact, he and I walked many weekends, as I recall, in his district, and what everybody's said about him is true. He's a great leader, very dedicated to seeing old downtown becomes a real downtown, and you can depend on him. And Amy, if you remember, I was one of two people that were out recruiting you to run for District One. In fact, I walked out once or twice out there, as I recall. But both of you are top people, and you're the epitome of what a public servant is. You can depend on them. And most, in all the years I've been on council, I think we've probably differed in votes probably no more than three or four times. And that's pretty significant because usually you don't get along with your spouse that well. So, anyway, I wish you both in your off time, but I'm sure both of you will be back doing something very productive for the community. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, thanks a lot, folks.
I'll just, I just want to say from my heart, Amy, you've been phenomenal leadership. And when I think of you, I think of grace, poise, and process. And Mike, you're just such a gentle giant, gentleman, but a giant in my heart. And you're just so laid back, but again, steadfast in what you want to get seen, what you want to see done. And I didn't know we were going to do this. And I love that you're dedicated to the downtown and you still will be, and I look forward to working with you with that, with both of you, again.
Okay. Well, Mike's been a great deputy mayor since I haven't missed a meeting, so he hasn't had to do anything. So, thanks, Mike. Thank you very much. And Amy, you sure are thorough, and you do look at everything up and down inside out, and I appreciate that. Other people, it's, oh, yes or no. You go deeper, and I appreciate that. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
If you want to say something. I'd like to say something.
Anything you say?
Go ahead.
Farewell.
Well, I just want to say thank you. It's been a great honor to work with mayor and council, but an even greater honor to work with all the staff at the city. I know the city's in the greatest of hands. After getting to know a lot of you guys, you're very caring. You go above and beyond every day for the people in this city. And, you know, you don't get a lot of recognition or thanks. I'm horrible at thanking people. You know, it's always the last thing I think about because, but I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff. You guys have been great. You do great work, and, you know, I know you'll continue to do great work. Thank you so much.
I, too, want to thank everyone, but I want to start with my husband, and he unfortunately was unable to attend here. He has some health issues, which is very sad. But anyway, he's doing better, but just can't make it. He's watching me on TV, so thank you for supporting my candidacy and supporting me in the six and a half years where I've worked happily at the city. And I, too, want to thank the most, first of all, the council. It's been an honor and privilege to serve on the council with all of my council, fellow council persons, and also to interact with this amazing Benita Springs staff from Arlene and Matt on down. Every director, every assistant has been unbelievably supportive and kind, and every silly question I asked got answered in a very respectful and thorough way. So you don't have to answer my silly questions anymore, but I still think, hope you could take my questions, and please keep up the remarkable work that you do. Benita is an amazing city, and you have a large part in contributing to that. So it's not the council that really does the work. It's you people, and so the city should recognize you, not us. But thank you for supporting me all the way, and I'll be watching on TV.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a second? Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any comments on the consent agenda? Okay. Ready, here we go. Mayor and council items, I think we covered, we have a wonderful staff that, they're helpful any way you want. They carry us. They carry us. You know, we're just off the street, basically, and I have a good heart, and we mean well for the city, but they have the answers to the things that we need to know, and I really appreciate them. And Amy and Mike, for the last two years with me, have done a wonderful job. And any other comments from mayor, council?
Sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura Carr. I just want to thank everyone who's supported me in my reelection, and I'm grateful, honored, and humble, and excited. So, thank you very much.
Okay, let's see, city attorney's items. You got anything for us?
I don't have any items. I do have a business item that I'll raise just in honor of the deputy mayor, because I know he would appreciate this. Under my contract, the city pays an annual retainer, and if there are savings, at the end of the year, I return a check to the city. I'm happy, I don't have the check with me, to announce that the amount will be over $80,000 for last year in savings, and that's a $30,000 increase in savings from the year before.
Okay. There you go, you know?
Does that mean we didn't call you enough?
Don't charge for calls, so that...
Okay. City managers' items.
Thank you, man and council. As you recall, at the last meeting, we had mentioned that the, in essence of Hurricane Ian, there will be a new disaster recovery committee created that's involved all jurisdictions within Lee County to prioritize our local mitigation strategy projects. At this time, Lee County has asked us to provide a draft of that list by the end of the month. So I'll let Matt expand on a little bit, but what we were, we understand the priorities are going to be mitigation as far as home buyouts and elevations and mitigating flood hazard areas. So we were looking at the opportunity to expand, and I think we have to expand the locations, but to keep our priorities...
I just want to thank everyone who supported me in my reelection and I'm grateful, honored, and humble and excited. So, thank you very much.
Okay, let's see, city attorney's items. You got anything for us?
I don't have any items. I do have a business item that I'll raise just in honor of the deputy mayor, because I know he would appreciate this. Under my contract, the city pays an annual retainer and if there are savings, at the end of the year, I return a check to the city. I'm happy, I don't have the check with me to announce that the amount will be over $80,000 for last year in savings. And that's a $30,000 increase in savings from the year before.
Thank you.
Okay.[536.32][536.32](APPLAUSE).
Does that mean we didn't call you enough?
Don't charge for calls, so that...
City managers' items.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you recall, at the last meeting, we had mentioned that the, in essence of Hurricane Ian, there will be a new disaster recovery committee created that's involved all jurisdictions within Lee County to prioritize our local mitigation strategy projects. At this time, Lee County has asked us to provide a draft of that list by the end of the month. So, I'll let Matt expand on a little bit, but what we were, we understand the priorities are going to be mitigation as far as home buyouts and elevations and mitigating flood hazard areas. So, we were looking at the opportunity to expand and I think we have to expand the locations. But to keep our priorities, of course, of the Quinn Down Imperial area, but there may be opportunities to expand that to other locations, including Imperial Shores and Hickory Island and all that.
Just to echo what Arlene's saying, the, we do have in this LMS strategy, home buyout and elevation, but it's specific to the area that Hurricane Irma flooded. And so, we would be looking to, you can't really expand it, but to add essentially very similar projects for elevation and then buyout. You know, we don't know that a lot of folks would want to do buyout, but it's good to have the iron in the fire, so to speak, certainly for elevation, you know, so that they can get into the modern flood conditions for the areas that were affected by this storm.
Yes, paid for by who?
It would be, should, should, and you know, this takes, you know, I was looking at a presentation with the timeline. This is really, you won't know for a year, year and a half whether, you know, whether there's traction. But it would, should we be successful and get a grant award, it would be similar to like what we've done with Irma, where you have to provide a 25% match. So, 75% would come from FEMA, which is what your question is, Mr. Mayor. But the other 25% for a project along that lines would come from the city.
Thank you.
So, this is just the beginning phase of that. We wanted some direction to make sure you all were comfortable with that submission and that as we learn more, as we're also going to be working with consultants in this process, as we did in Irma, same results. And so, we'll continue the process. But if you're comfortable with that direction, this is where we'll begin advocating as we move forward.
Yes, I've had some people call and said they've been flooded before. Can you buy me out or something? I said, well, I'm not sure how it works. You're not in that particular area that is covered right now. So, I'm in favor of investigating this. Thank you.
And on the lines of Hurricane Ian recovery, Lisa, if you had a quick announcement regarding the tax office that you received.
Hello, Lisa Robertson, for the record. The Lee County Tax Collector, and I believe it's a statewide push, has announced that the real estate tax bill for every resident in Benita and the remainder of Lee County will be delayed one month. So, whereas you would normally, all residents would have normally and taxpayers would have already received their invoice, it will not go out from the tax collector until the very end of November, they're saying. That's their projection now currently. And therefore, your payment and your discount timeline is extended a month. So, you are not, your time to pay will not be shortened. It will be the exact same amount. It's just that the, because of all the, you know, the damage that the infrastructure, technology, and everything sustained and whatnot, they're moving the timeline of the bills out. So, it'll be one month later, near the end of this month, and then you'll have the additional month to pay. And your discount that you receive will be whole. So, when you would have paid as November 30th to get your 4% discount, now it'll be December 30th. That's the timeline that has been given. So, I just want to make sure everyone knew that.
Now, the taxes are based on the property value on the first of 2022, not the damaged house.
Yes. Well, that is the original value that has been set. As we have spoken before, there's been an executive order that's issued and in place in order to provide a temporary relief for the properties that are either, how do I say it, uninhabitable or that are irreputable, damaged, and that in some cases, you know, really don't exist anymore. So, that is the temporary provision. We just heard, when they announced that, they announced there'll be a special session in Tallahassee, and we just heard that that is being scheduled in December to put in place a more permanent solution for those residents and properties that they know are either severely damaged or uninhabitable. So, we're going to be looking forward to that guidance in December. We're also going to see, you know, the tax bills that do come out, how that's going to be handled with respect to properties that, you know, that are significantly impacted by the storm. So, those have been put in place statewide. So, we feel confident that statewide we'll get some guidance that'll be equally provided to all residents in Benita.
Possibly, they're not going to go up and, the taxes aren't going up from what they were established already?
No, 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 not at all. It would just be a matter of, from what we understand, the value that has been set originally, as you indicated, January 22, for those properties, it's no longer, it's no longer a value that they're going to be assessed on. But we don't want to get ahead of ourselves because that special assistance is going to give us some guidelines on how the relief will be provided. But it's pretty clear, based on what's in place right now with the executive order, there will be relief prepared. Right now, it's temporary, provided, excuse me, right now, it's temporary. And hopefully, the December session will provide some more permanent solutions with how it was stated. So, and it'll be statewide.
It'll be good for the people.
Outstanding, outstanding news. And the 30 days, we could all use 30 days longer to pay for the tax. So, just, just good news. I mean, in a dire situation, just, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you.
No, I have a few more items, just as a, oh, sorry.
Fred?
Yeah, I would like to bring this up because it relates to what Matt was talking about. I had a very interesting conversation with some people from FEMA, in fact, the insurance guy. Even though we won't be able to get these grants for elevation for at least a year, probably, when you're considering rebuilding a home that flooded badly, you should really look at elevating because here's why. For every foot you go above the 100-year flood plane, you get a significant, big significant discount on your insurance on the house. And you can, every foot up to five feet. So, if possible, if you're going to raise it, raise it five feet, then you get to maximum you can get. But that may, the savings on the insurance may just make a big payment towards the mortgage you buy or whatever to do that. So, think about it. It's a big decision, but you don't flood anymore, number one, and you get a big savings on insurance. And insurance is doing nothing but going up.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
So, mayor and council, if I can re-circle the HMGP, I just clarify with Matt, if we could actually have a vote on that item?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCaramba?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, at this time, I'd like Matt Feeny to kind of give you a little bit of a briefing on where we are with the debris and additionally, some opportunity for some advanced funding that we're working on.
So, to date, and we've moved about 220,000 cubic yards of debris. It seems to be holding steady at a 60% vegetation, 40% flood damage kind of split on that number. We anticipate that that number is reflective somewhere around about 70% of what we think the final project will be. So, we're assuming it's going to be around 325,000 cubic yards when it's all said and done. And the reason we're working on those numbers is there is an opportunity that did not exist during Hurricane Irma that allows us to apply for advanced funding based off of an estimate. And this will be one of our most significant bills relational to the hurricane. So, if we can get some advanced funding on that, up to 50% of the estimated volume and number, not volume, cost. So, we're working on that with finance department. I have a draft estimate, have been working with our vendors to understand what they think is left on the street in terms of debris. It's where those numbers are coming from. And we've put a dollar value to that and we will be here shortly submitting a request to FEMA for advanced funding on that.
Now, I see a lot of piles of concrete driveways and sand and stuff. Is that, that's not debris, is it, or what?
Well, it is, but probably most of what you see is on the county portion of Little Hickory Boulevard, so that they will be addressing that. That's not representative in the numbers I just gave you. You know, that's something that's on the county side of the project, but they'll be working on those issues. The sand is different from debris. It's treated a little differently in the contracts. Obviously, it gets screened and placed back on the beach. And the concrete, I think, is something that they're still working through, which, you know...
And I see they're cleaning up the mangroves.
Yes.
Last week, they've been cleaning up, doing the best they can there. Thank you, Matt. Yes.
Additionally, I wanted to make everyone aware, we had the opportunity to have FEMA representatives last night at the First Presbyterian Church for a town hall meeting. We know we weren't able to get to everyone's questions at that time, but we are fortunate to have a DRC, a Disaster Recovery Center, that is open within the city at the old rec center. They did a soft opening yesterday, but from now on, they will be open Mondays through Saturdays, the only day they'll be closed, is Sunday, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that is a small recreation center, 26738 Pine Avenue, near our ball fields.
Thank you. That's good. Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yesterday, I hosted a meeting with Aaron Devers, who's the district director for Senator Scott's office. And during the course of that meeting, found that Irma is still paying, I mean FEMA is still paying out Irma claims from 2017. If there are anybody in the audience here or watching this, and you still have open claim items with FEMA regarding Irma, I would encourage you to go over to the Disaster Recovery Center and see if there's people there that can help you with those claims. If it involves permit issues and so forth, I would encourage you to contact Community Development. I would hope that we can clear out all Irma claims in this, in this area within the next few months. And I'm sure it's paperwork problems, it's may have been permitting problems. I see a lot of messages up on Nextdoor that talk about, you know, do I need to get permits? Do I need to get electrical permits? Can I do the work myself? So, I'm not quite sure what's caused the hangup, other than I would encourage people to go to the Disaster Recovery Center and see if they can't clean up what's needed so you guys can get reimbursed on your Irma claims. And hopefully, we will take lessons learned and the payments on Ian claims will go quicker and smoother. But I just wanted to touch base with what I learned from Senator Scott's district director here yesterday.
Yes, Amy.
I just wanted to ask Arlene and Matt, I think this is wonderful news that we have the Disaster Recovery Center locally. The thing that I have been running into is not that, we have this vast method by which we're trying to reach people and giving them information, but they're still not getting it. So, this needs to be somehow gotten to people who are in shock because of what happened to them, so that they could come and actually have a personal interaction with them. I don't know if we could do more outreach, but I'm going to lay it back into your responsibility to see if somehow, I know we do Facebook, I know we do, everything we're doing is great, but for some reason even, and I've done this myself, when I try to email people and tell them what to do, they don't seem to understand the language that I'm using, you know, even though I try to do it straightforward. I think it, I think it's a problem because of this stress that they're under. That's what I really think. So, if we could do anything to really reach the people that are in dire straits, I think would be good.
One of the things that FEMA offered that we've kind of directed this on the locations is they offered to go walking the streets.
Right.
Door to door and spending time with folks and trying to talk with them. One of the messages that the FEMA director said last night is, he called it TAR. It's talk, continue to talk, get on the phone with them or visit them, or they want to do outreach, advocate for yourself, and read all your materials, because it might just be one little hangup of paperwork. And the way the formality of government, of how it reads, you might feel you're not approved, but it could be a hangup of your driver's license, your property tax bill, they need a power bill. So, yes, but we also said that we would try to help direct them to locations in the city that may have had more devastation, that they can actually physically go door to door and try to connect with some of those people. Because I think it's difficult, especially if they've lost vehicles, to figure out next steps.
And I do think it'd be helpful for us to identify those hard-hit areas and say, well, we're about 50% there or 60%, so that we know the recovery. Because I know what's happening pretty much in my district, but I really don't know what's going on in other people's district because I just haven't time to do that personally. So, I don't know if it would be helpful with the rest of the council, but I do think we want to know what, how Benita's doing. We're wonderful. We have a great residence and we're going to be really good. Just as we recovered from Irma, we're going to recover from this. But I think it might be, I think we all want to know that we're getting better. I guess that's the message.
We can probably talk, have Tony and John kind of work together on some of the damage assessments we did and then maybe at the next meeting, kind of give a report of where we're coming along. But at least we can walk you through the initial damage assessments and where we are now.
Right.
Yes, today we have a new government affairs office lady. Jane has the phone number and email for her. If you have any questions, it'd probably be easier to talk to her than to call the 800 number, the big number.
So, many of you, there's a mass email list, an email blast that usually goes out regularly to all the elected officials from Catherine, I believe is her name with FEMA. She's been with us for six weeks and she's been stationed at the EOC. She notified us that she's actually turning it over to a new representative and that was emailed to the mayor this morning with the new representative. So, we'll have her contact information here as well.
From Jane has the information.
But you'll see, instead of from the emails from Catherine now, you're going to see it from our new representative with the updates.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a little change.
I did have one other item I want to discuss, not necessarily Ian-related, but circles back to it. We received notification, it was Monday, a day ago, yeah, I think, that we sent out regarding the Lee County Legislative Delegation Meeting. We received the information in between preparing the packet. And they're going to be having a meeting on December 7th at 9:00 AM. That is our council meeting, but our council meeting's in the evening. As always before, Matt and myself will attend the meeting, but we do need some generalized direction on our legislative priorities. We can come back further to the December 7th meeting and finalize that. I did speak to Representative Botana, who said that we didn't have to have the final list today, we can continue to talk, but we do need some direction of what messaging we'll be providing. And then also to remind you that November 30th is the date for the solicitation for our new lobbyist. And so, we will have whatever proposals we receive at your December 7th meeting for your review. And so, we're going to be asking for direction at that point. There are many options that will happen on the 7th. You can either select one at that meeting and authorize staff to negotiate a contract, or you can ask for interviews from the top three. So, Derek would go through all those options with you of where you see, but in the meantime, yeah, we did prepare, and this is for discussion, of course, we anticipate that it would be very helpful to at least have one of our legislative strategic priorities, at a minimum of one, directly related to Ian, so that we can advocate for responsiveness for the city. So, we just came up with very general language now. I think what our message would be on the 7th would be that, you know, we would be looking to continue to promote the city's recovery of Hurricane Ian for increased funding of technical assistance, economic development opportunities, and sustainable resistance, resiliency, sustainable resiliency. Not forgetting all the other priorities we have as well in general, but expressing we want some legislative action in those regards.
So, would you be turning these in or would you be reading these on the dais or how would you?
We don't even read all of them, no. Basically...
Because I was going to say, we want to cut these down.
We will need to cut, this is, so what we did is we provided you with last year's list. Usually that gets sent in a letter later on. What the delegation expects is each entity, Lee County municipalities, they have one representative speak for 15 seconds at the most, 10 or 15 seconds. Basically, in the past... the most, 10 or 15 seconds. Basically, in the past, this was Carol Green's.
You would most likely probably read what Arlene just read to you, and maybe one other of those bullet points, but, you know, touch on what we think our need would be, which I'm assuming would be related to Hurricane Ian.
Correct, correct. But the actual process of submitting our legislative requests is a form that we send to the, to our representatives, which in this case is Representative Anna Botana and Senator Kathleen Pasadena. So, we actually fill out applications that go to both of them with each project. And if you recall, we also have this attached, the legislative, we discussed this back in May, Legislative Appropriations for Discussion. We received a little bit of different direction from Representative Botana. He had suggested many projects in the past. We were asked to look at maybe one project and push that project. We think that we have a good start still to continue the request for the elevations and the buyout, home buyout, and Imperial Quinn and Dean, but we would want to suggest that we expand that area as well in our legislative request also for those mitigation activities.
And just real quick, something Arlene and I talked about briefly. One item we want to add to the list is that you're going to be having, there's going to be a special session starting just after this. And as was discussed earlier, there's going to be tax relief deservedly to the homeowners who have lost their homes. That's also going to impact revenues to local governments, and we should be asking the legislature, sure, for either stopgap funds, or low-interest loans, or some opportunity for us to be able to remain on budget in those opportunities. And I think that we should highlight that before the session starts, so it's at least top of mind.
What do we need to do here, Arlene?
Oh, sorry.
Well, go ahead. You asked a question, go ahead. What do we need to do? And then I have a comment, if you're taking comments.
Sure. So, generally, we're asking you, are you comfortable with last year's list, with us expounding on the needs that we have for Hurricane Ian, both what Derek and I said? And then, in this instance, you would be authorizing Matt and I to attend for us on the 7th. We've attended each year. But this year, myself and our Matt will go up to the podium together, since Carol Green did that duty before. And then hopefully, you'll have a decision on your lobbyist that evening, or get into a direction for that evening. And then they'll take that cart and keep going, and advise us on next steps, and we can hone in on these language and our requests.
Okay. I might make a suggestion on one of these, if it's okay. Item five, which talks about affordable insurance rates for our citizens, the city opposes. I'd rather see a support statement, to the extent that would encourage the legislature to take actions necessary to increase the amount of competition in the market for homeowners' insurance. I don't know that just focusing on trying to reduce the rates is going to get us where we need to be. The way you get the rates reduced is to increase competition in the market. An example is, given the current competition in the market, Tower Hill, which is, you know, many people use as their homeowners' insurance, recently announced a 50% increase for 2023, and they're moving to what's called an exchange, what's called a reciprocal exchanged kind of insurance company. And basically, what that allows them to do is not only to charge a higher premium, but to also charge a subscriber fee, which is directly deposited into their surplus accounts. Now, if we had better competition in the market, I think there would be better pricing for all homeowners and residents in Bonita Springs and in the state when it comes to homeowners' insurance. So, as opposed to a negative, we oppose something, I would say, I would suggest we write it as a positive. We support the idea of increasing the amount of competition in the market, so that we can get more companies in here willing to compete for the business of not only residents of Bonita Springs, but all of Florida. Just a suggestion. Well, I agree with that myself, that it's a free marketplace. It's not a government's decision to tell these companies how much they can charge. You know, a lot of people want to regulate everything. But yes, Amy.
No, I was just going to say, I think, I mean, the insurance industry is complicated, so, and a lot of, I believe, a lot of the reasons why people, the insurance companies have been leaving the Florida market is because of the litigation and the payment system that now exists. So, there has to be a whole change at the state level for what can and cannot be done, and how they're going to pay out claims. And a classic one is the roof, where everybody who had 20-year-old roofs got a new roof, which is sort of a strange thing to do in most cases, you know, because they had damage. I mean, that normally doesn't, if your car is totaled previously, they wouldn't give you the full value of your car, though I think they did this year too, with all the cars that were totaled. So, I think it's complicated. It's not, there are things that have driven that industry into the ground in Florida that is different than in other states. So, that's what the legislature has to address.
Well, my opinion on that is, the interest rates have been so low the last few years. Insurance companies take your premiums, and they invest it in CDs or government bonds, which used to pay a lot more than they were a few months ago. So, they have a financial problem, I think.
Well, yeah.
Beyond this other stuff that's going on.
Insurance companies always put an issue, but that's the same for every state. It doesn't explain why Florida hasn't.
Yeah. I think they're trying to survive. Yes?
Yeah, on this, something I just learned again, Citizens, that's the insurance company that state funds, that takes you if you get canceled by everybody else. They've, this is in reaction to what Amy's talking about, but it's the wrong way to go about it. They just told a person that had a 17-year-old roof, has to be replaced, or they won't insure them. That's a condition. And it's all because of this crazy thing that went on with roofs was the big-ticket item. So, what's, the right answer probably would be for roofs to be on a prorated basis. You get paid for replacement based on how many years of service it has, and you cap it at 25 or 30 years. So, if you've got a 20-year-old roof, then you get paid for five years' worth of what is left. But that's the big problem, and the legislation is aware of that, so hopefully, they'll take that on. But making somebody put on a new roof, when they got one that's 17 years old and a lot of life left in it, to keep insurance, you've been canceled by everybody else, that's not a good way to go.
Yes, Jesse.
I agree holistically with most of the things people are saying on insurance, but I think we could kind of look at what we're looking at and kind of zoom out a little bit. There's going to, first of all, there's going to be a special session on insurance. Okay, so we have to see what's going to happen there. And then there's something that's going to happen within the state legislature with insurance. So, when I say zoom out, these are our asks for this upcoming session. So, if we only get so much time and so much attention, they need to be granular asks that are specific to us as a city, not holistic asks that, hey, we as the state of Florida could do better if we tackled insurance this way. They're going to tackle that in the legislature. We get a little bit of time. So, things that are specific to us, like just looking at eyeballing our thing, you know, you know, the Big Cypress Basin, obviously, that needs to go away, because last year, DeSantis got rid of that anyway. So, that would probably come off. But, point being, the, okay, number eight, the one right above it, paramutual facilities within allowing referendum to allow slot gaming. That's specific to us right here. So, whether it's this one or any other one, we need to play one or two songs only, and those are the only ones we need to be playing, because we only get so much attention. So, it can't be something that we want to fix within the state of Florida. It needs to be, here's the thing that we want in Bonita, and then we have to keep hitting that drum to both the house and the set. That's what we have to do. Because if we have the shotgun approach of things that are holistically great for the state, that's awesome, but it won't bring home the bacon for Bonita. So, we have to focus on what it is specifically within these asks that we want to do. So, I think, you know, the red portion on the front here, I think that's great for the meeting that we have upcoming. After we get the lobbyist and we start to nail down in details, I think it's important that we keep in perspective. We only get so much, so we have to make sure that whatever it is we're going to ask for is going to bring something home to the city.
And then, once we are secure with the lobbyist, we'd like the opportunity to discuss with the Bonita dog track number, that actual specific one, because as legislation has changed, we want to make sure we're advocating for what the actual means are. So, I think we've got some work to do on these. I think what we're asking for the meeting is to kind of focus on our Hurricane Ian recovery. And then, also, I think we want to, they do ask about the financial asks, so we probably want to explain that we want to keep moving forward with.
Buyout.
Buyout, but increase those geographic errors and also elevations as needed.
Anything else? Okay. Mayor and Council reports, have any reports, folks? Nada? We had a nice meeting with FEMA last night at the First Presbyterian Church. It was attended by 100, 120 people. They answered questions as to how the insurance, one question was flood insurance and wind insurance and FEMA. And if the flood insurance people won't pay, then you've got to contact FEMA. They're sort of like the regulators of the flood insurance people. So, if you're having a problem, this is specifically for around Georgia, that FEMA does some sort of regulation of the flood insurance. So, if you're having big troubles with your flood insurance, contact the FEMA representative, which is, you can get through, Jane has her phone number. So, that was one thing that came out last night, and it's very confusing. They don't want to pay, I tell you this. My homeowner's policy, I call them up and talk to them for 45 minutes, and I said, oh, we'll have somebody call you in the next two days. Well, nobody's ever called. So, I got to call back for another 45 minutes and get put on hold for two days or whatever. It's getting to be a mess, but it's a big deal. It's a big disaster, maybe the biggest disaster in this country's history. So, we'll live through it. Bonita's still here, and we're proud of Bonita. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, I did have one final announcement. I'm sorry, just to remind everyone that December 6th is holiday in the park. And I have received many questions. So, to clarify for the public, so everyone knows, is the city charter, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, step in if you like, but the city charter states that the new council members become council upon the certification of the election. We've been notified in writing by the supervisor elections that that will occur sometime on Friday at noon. At that point, the new council members, whether we have a swearing-in service or not, will be, will then become the council members. But we did want to also extend the invitation to, as a sort of an in-between, we will have, at that time, Councilmember-elect Bogaz, and Councilmember-Fulick will be our full council members. But Councilmember-Cumbaba and Councilmember-Gibson, if you'd like to join us for the tree lighting, we'd be more than happy to have you there as well. So, thank you.
We're not hazards.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Matt, sorry.
I'm sorry, I did forget. I had mentioned prior to the storm that we were going to be working on the Terry Street Roundabout, the improvements council adopted in the start of October, but obviously, that got a little delayed. So, they are starting some of that work. I don't have an exact time on the road construction, but some of the underground work is starting. So, in the upcoming month, I expect we'll be doing the improvements there. And then, if you do drive around the US 41 Bonita Beach Road intersection, the design contractor is collecting traffic data for the quadrant road. So, for those of you that are leaving council, that is fully underway and working.
Thank you.
Want to get more money, just keep driving over.
Exactly. If you want a better outcome, keep.
Back up, and go ahead. Back up.
Okay, we're having a public comment. Public comment. Anything you want to talk about? Yes. Are you coming up? All right. Councilman-elect?
Morning, Council. Thank you. Nigel Fulick, District 5, Councilperson-elect. I'm used to saying that. Just a couple of things. You brought up one that was really, really important, the insurance issue. I think all of you know that that's something that's part of my industry. A big answer to a lot of our insurance problems is going to be when the legislature decides what they're going to do. Insurance companies are in business, and the whole idea with the roofs, which I think I've discussed with some of you, is just like a car or a battery. I think Councilwoman Carr, you know, mentioned that fact. So, once legislature decides what they're going to do that makes sense, then the insurance companies, and there are many are sitting there waiting to see what we do, they'll be back in Florida. There's business here, and they'll want to do it. The issue as far as what is going to cost our residents and our citizens may not be as bad. Once again, all depending on what we do at the legislature, or what the legislature does for us. On a public or on a private notice, I've been able to talk to Chris Corey and Mike Gibson, and thank them again for their guidance throughout the process. But Amy, and Mike especially, thank you for everything you've done for the city. They both have always been available to, I know myself and to Jamie, when we had questions. And they've never told us what to do, but they've certainly given us the appropriate guidance. So, thank you for your service over the years, and don't expect that your phone won't be ringing. And Mike, I know where your bike shop is, so it'll be easy to reach you there. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else? We call it quits. We're adjourned.